This meeting is being recorded.
And you're on, Jean.
Okay, thank you, Tina. Thank you. Um. We have opened the meeting in executive session before, in open session before going into executive session. We're now returning to open session. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via Montague Community Television Broadcast. The extension of the emergency open meeting law provisions were signed into law as Chapter 20, Section 20 of the Acts of 2021. The school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of these procedures as it is practical to. Members of the public who wish to join the meeting may do so by accessing the link on the Gill-Montague Regional School District website. It can be found under School Committee Notices and Agendas for Upcoming Meetings, and it will be tonight's date that you'll find. We'd like to welcome anyone who's joining us in the Zoom audience. We are live streaming as well as broadcasting on MCTV, and afterwards, a recording of the meeting will be available on MCTV and the district website. So, welcome to everyone. At this moment, I would just like to make an announcement for the committee and the public. As the committee is aware, we wanted to acknowledge the passing of Eileen Fortin. Eileen was a dedicated member of our support staff in the district for more than a decade. She will be missed by her friends, colleagues, and the students. At this time, I would like to ask the committee for a moment of silence to honor her memory and service to our children. Thank you very much. Again, welcome to everyone. This would be the time for public participation, which is policy BEDH that has been reinstated to be held remotely. We do not have anyone this evening that has asked to participate publicly, but we do welcome it. If you are in our Zoom audience, please keep your camera and microphone off. Thank you. Okay, Brian, important events?
So Friends of Gill are not on here, but they're, because they're meeting this evening. In fact, I think they met at 5:15 tonight. There is an early, there are two early release days, Thursday and Friday, March 9th and 10th later this week for parent-teacher conferences. There is an early release for professional development on Wednesday, March 22nd. Turner's Falls High School will host its Second Annual Extravaganza on Thursday, March 23rd from 5:00 to 6:30 PM. Friends of Sheffield Bingo for Books event will be held Friday, March 24th at 6:00 PM in the Sheffield Cafeteria. Friends of Sheffield meet as a group on Monday, March 27th at 6:00 PM in the Sheffield Teachers' Room. Yo Elementary School will hold its kindergarten open house on Tuesday, March 28th, and Hillcrest Elementary School will hold its kindergarten open house on Thursday, March 30th.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything to add? Sometimes one of our members will get a notice about something else that's happening. Okay. Um. Student representative report. Heather, I wasn't sure if Sina's able to, there's Sina, hi.
Hi. All right. So I don't really have a ton this week. We have just kind of been focusing on talking like spring conference just coming up. I'm not sure of the exact date, but it's pretty exciting because this year we get to host it at our high school, which is pretty cool. Um. Let me think, what else do we got? Let's see, so Hairspray is still going on, we're doing rehearsals at the end of the month, very exciting. It is, I think, March 31st, April 1st, and April 2nd. Um, we've been selling prom tickets at lunch, which is pretty cool. I actually do have the date for that. That is May 12th. That's kind of coming up a little bit, few months, it's really exciting. And other than that, the junior class is going to do a butter braid fundraiser, which are like these little pastry things. But yeah, that's all I got this week. Oh, also, there was a, a meeting today with some students from the school, from all different grades, and we're going to be meeting with some students from Pioneer, and they're going to be coming here, and we're going to be going there, and we're going to be having some discussions about their regionalization. So, yes, that's all I got.
Well, thank you, thank you, that's great information.
Thanks.
Sina, we appreciate it. Okay, Brian, Superintendent's Report.
I just wanted to make note of changes to this point to the 2000, to the 22, 23 school year calendar with the addition of four snow days to date. There are changes that will be posted to the district calendar soon and will be shared and sent out with families in my next newsletter. As of now, the last days of school for this school year are June 21st for students and June 22nd for staff. The Friends of Gill is holding the PTO as organize a calendar fundraiser for the month of March, and raffle ticket donations of $5 each are being sold by Gill students. So if you're interested in getting in on that, find yourself a Gill student or consider contacting the school to see how you might be able to get in on it. The PTO will be holding a pizza party for the class that sells the most. I did want to share some information about some events that have gone on and some that are coming up. Recently, the Rise Up Class at the high school, which is a self-actualization and community leadership class at Turner's Falls High School, participated in a community service project with students at Sheffield and Hillcrest Elementary Schools. The, the 9th through 12th graders realized in their class that they all have something unique about them that affects the way they interact with the world. These youth leaders also feel that people tend to view these differences as something to avoid talking about, and that it's important to teach children how to ask questions and speak respectfully. Thus, the Chloe Project was born. The students from the class researched books on a variety of topics that they could relate to that included physical, neurological, intellectual, and cultural differences, and they each selected titles that they felt personally connected to. They then took a field trip to both Hillcrest and Sheffield and read these books to children in grades 1 through 4 and engaged them in dialogue about the topics. They then donated the copies of the books to each of the school's diverse books libraries, and in addition, each student and staff that was involved was gifted with a silicone pop bracelet to remind them of the visit. Feedback that we got was that the high school kids really loved going back to their elementary roots and reconnecting with teachers that they loved, and as is always the case, that the elementary kids were very impressed in being around the high school kids and having the opportunity to learn directly from the older students at the school. So, thank you to Faith Columbus for organizing this. And going back to the Turner's Falls High School Extravaganza, last year, the Rise Up Class held a dodgeball tournament that evening, which was a fun event for everybody, and it was actually the funds from the dodgeball tournament that were used to purchase the books and the gifts for the students when they came over to read with the elementary kids. As Sina had mentioned, the Six-Town Regional Planning Board has organized interschool field trips. On March 13th, 15 Turner's, 15 Turner's Falls High School students will act as hosts and representatives for a group of similar size from Pioneer Valley Regional School. Alan Genovese and other members of the Six-Town Regional Planning Board have organized the visit in order to involve students from both districts in the regionalization discussion and process. Pioneer students will arrive at about 9:40, they'll tour the school, meet with the planning committee members and, and for discussion and lunch. And then the Pioneer Valley students will return to their school, leaving at about 11:45. On Tuesday, March 21st, a mirror visit will occur at, at Pioneer Valley with 15 of our students going to Pioneer to be hosted by their students for similar discussions. As we mentioned earlier, the Second Annual Turner's Falls High School Extravaganza will be held on Thursday, March 23rd at 5:00 PM. It's really targeted predominantly at our incoming, current 8th graders or incoming 9th graders, but all students are welcome. And save the date, postcards had been sent out to those families, and the announcement has been posted on website and social media. I also wanted to share some information, and this is also connected to the work of the Rise Up Class and the number of high school volunteers that have emerged over the last couple of years to initiate and maintain connections to learning at the elementary level. Last Thursday evening, a large number of families were joined by community and student volunteers at Read Across Sheffield. We wanted to thank local artist Susan Fuller, School Resource Officer Dan Minor and Mac, Captain Luke Hartnett from the Turner's Falls Fire Department, Turner's Falls graduate Gina Veruzzo, and Angela Rovedi Leonard, who is the Youth Services Librarian at the Montague Public Libraries, for being guest readers for this event. We also wanted to thank students Tatiana Carr Williams, Jamie Martin Ovalli, Mickey Klempner Sayano, and 11 Evelyn Moore, who volunteered as readers from the Rise Up Class. In addition, there were several volunteers from the Turner's Falls High School Student Council, including Ricky Pareja, Izzy Vaquula Curtis, Owen Lavalley, Shanny Ovalley Riblero, Pamela Gomez, Jovan Ovalley Meieria, Mario Pareja, Estes Lameris Rankin, and Spanish family liaison Jimena de Pareja. Thank you all. Thank you to all the student and staff volunteers for making this a wonderful family event, and I would encourage all of you to visit the Sheffield website where you can see tons of pictures from the event and again, get a chance to see the names of the student and staff volunteers who made the event possible. I also wanted to provide just a very brief update. Earlier in the year, I informed the committee that the district was applying for a grant that was made available to some Massachusetts schools to make improvements in ventilation. I'm pleased to report that the district has been awarded $286,752 to make improvements, further improvements to our HVAC system through fiscal year '27. We're currently exploring priority projects to begin this summer at the schools that might need improvements the most. As far as school committee meetings with students, I'm going to have to meet with Student Council Advisor Beth Fortin about the next date when the school committee could meet with students, and I'll share the date and times about a week in advance. So keep an eye out in your email, hopefully I'll, I'll have a date by the time we meet next. And Read Across Hillcrest also occurred last Friday evening. There were a number of families, and we wanted to again thank the guest readers Luke Hartnett, Kimberly Stewart, retired teacher Laurie Saylor, and Director of Teaching and Learning Jean Powers for being guest readers from the Hillcrest Elementary Diverse Books Collection. So, thank you to everybody for organizing those two events, and also to the students who read one of their books at Sheffield in both English and Spanish. And it's nice to see that our biliterate students are encouraging further biliteracy at the elementary level.
Thank you, Brian, so much. All those events, past and upcoming, sound amazing. It's, it's wonderful to hear about them all, thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, Business and Operations Report, Joanne Blyer.
Jane, I'm just going to have the budget later, so I won't have another.
Oh, okay, you want to do it under the regular, okay, I didn't know if there was anything else, that's perfect, yep, thank you. So, under School Committee Reports, we have the warrant subcommittee approval. We need to vote the four warrants that I will detail, and actually, the, in addition, all the specific details are available in your packet. The first is Fiscal Year '23 Warrant Number 3331 in the amount of $49,738.11. The next is Fiscal Year '23 Warrant in the, and the warrant number is 3332 in the amount of $44,293.58. The next Fiscal Year '23 Warrant is Number 3333 in the amount of $121,143.73. And the last is Fiscal Year '23 Warrant Number 3334 in the amount of $3,970.30. I'll entertain a motion to approve them as a group if that's acceptable.
Come on.
Thank you, Heather.
Second, Jennifer.
And second, Jennifer, any discussion? I'll take a roll call vote, Bill.
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you. Okay, under Business, the first is a discussion about Fiscal Year '24 Preliminary Budget, and Joanne is going to do a presentation on this for us. We will be voting as a committee at our next meeting on March 14th to officially approve the budget. All right, I'm going to share my screen. Okay. Get all of you out of the way here. All right, so, this is just a presentation to show you the changes that we've made to the budget to balance it and how the state aid came in. So here's the schedule, the calendar that we've been working through. So we'll be voting next week, and we are required to have a two-thirds vote, and we have to vote that no later than March 31st and 45 days prior to our first meeting, which typically is the first week of May. So if it snows, I guess it wouldn't really hurt us, but March 14th is about the end of our window to vote the budget. So, student enrollment, I just want to talk a little bit about how that impacts our revenues. So, these are different ways with that we can look at the enrollment within the district. So, foundation enrollment, the very top number there, that's the number of students that live in the towns of Montague and the towns of Gill and attend public school, whether it's our public school or another public school or charter. So, the charter schools that they can go to or school choice. All of those students would be included in our foundation enrollment. The district enrollment is students that come to us from Gill or Montague that are tuitioned in from Irving or our school choice into our district, and that's the enrollment, the number of bodies in our buildings. And then we break out K8 and the high school enrollment there. And then if you go down a little bit farther, you can see the choice in and the choice out numbers. So if you just track that number right across for choice in, you'll see that the 90 students that we have in Fiscal '23 is as high as it's been since Fiscal '19. So that number's coming back. It's growing again, and it had quite a significant jump in one year, from 63 up to 90. I had done the math before, and I believe that was about broke down the percentages for you, so we can look at them while we're talking. Yeah, it's up 42%. So that's a really good number for us. Our choice in number is up 42%, and then the number below it, our choice out dropped from 216 students to 179. So if you go all the way back to Fiscal '14, our choice out has not been that low. That's a drop in one year of 17%. And then charter school dropped from 77 down to 60. So, you know, we had a couple of dips there in 18, 19, where we had 15 students, 59 students, but that's a pretty significant drop as well, that's 22% from the prior year. So those are all really good numbers. Now, because our choice out and our charter out both declined so significantly, those numbers impact our foundation enrollment, and that is what led to us not getting additional Chapter 70 this year. And so here are the different enrollment variations that I just, we just talked about. So, in district enrollment, students in our buildings, no matter where they're from. Foundation enrollment, students that live in our towns, no matter where they go to public school. Now, if they attend private school or if they're home schooled, they do not count in our foundation enrollment. Then the foundation enrollment is used and multiplied by different categories of rates for each demographic group or each grade level or different spending categories, and that's what creates our foundation budget. Thanks, John, did you have a question?
Just a very quick one. Joanne, I, I'm noticing that the difference between the foundation enrollment and the district enrollment is approximately the same as the difference between the choice in and the choice out. Is that generally true? It sort of makes sense in a way.
And the charter, yes, that is basically it.
Okay, thank you.
Well, not, not exactly. Right, so choice in, tuition in, you don't see the Irving tuition there. Irving tuition number. So, the in-district enrollment would include students that are tuitioned in from Irving and choice in. But they don't include our choice out, like that number's not part of our in-district enrollment and our charter out. So all of those things would have to come in and out of there to go from in-district enrollment to foundation enrollment. And then in-district enrollment also doesn't include our special ed out-of-district students.
Thank you.
Okay, so, the Chapter 70 formula. So once we have the foundation enrollment and then the foundation budget is calculated, the state does that calculation, and then they also calculate what each community is required to contribute to education. And that's based on their earned income by residents and their property value. So they take that number for each community, subtract it from that community's foundation budget, and then the difference would be our Chapter 70. Now, if that, the math comes out, so we get less money than we had last year, we would be held harmless. We would still get at least the same amount of money that we got last year, and that's where we fell this year. I'm going to get back into the choice and charter here for a minute. So this goes back a couple extra years. You can go back to 2009, you can see the choice in, choice out, and charter out. If you notice, charter out in 2009 is much lower than it is now. It gradually grew. That's because charter schools were coming into existence and they were adding grades as they went. And so that number was growing because more charter schools were becoming available. But if you look at that choice out number and you just keep going back, 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 you know, 2009, 2012, we were in the 170s. So, those are really good numbers. And I made a little picture of it for you, so you can see our choice out is the red line. Choice in is the green line, jumping up at the end there. And then our charter out is the purple line. That's starting to drop again. This is a Chapter 70 calculation. So on the left at the top, you can see our Chapter 70 from Fiscal '23. So that's a year ago, that's what our Chapter 70 was. And that number comes over to the bolded ones toward the right. So they take the foundation budget, subtract the required contribution, and that should give you the Chapter 70 aid. And the required net school percentage of foundation in Fiscal '23 toward the right, you can see it was 100%. And in Fiscal '24, it's 100.87%. That means that we are not that far into Hold Harmless. So, you know, we can hope if that enrollment stays flat that we won't be held harmless again next year. But the enrollment really has to flatten at that 947, it can't shrink any more than that. If it continues to shrink, we'll have trouble getting more Chapter 70. Jennifer?
I'm just wondering if people like generally understand what it means, hold harmless, and also the last sentence you said. Like, do people generally understand what you're saying, like what the repercussions of what you're saying are? I, I sort of understand it, but I just wonder, the general population who may or may not be watching this, or may watch it later, know what you mean when you say that? And you, you probably have a better sense of that than I do.
I can hope people understand it. And, you know, I don't get a lot of questions, so if anybody here needs me to explain that again or differently, then I can try to do that.
Yeah, I'd actually, can you explain Hold Harmless again, Joanne? I, I know you've done it before, but.
So I'll go back to this chart, and it'd be a lot easier if I could like point at things as I'm doing this. But let's start on the left with the numbers on the left, and we'll just go down. So the prior year aid is where they start with this calculation. Foundation budget, and that, you can see that number is coming from the right over to the left, so number two. Foundation budget, that's the prior year or that's, that's the Fiscal '24 foundation budget. They subtract out our required contribution, and the number they get is $7,680,000. So if you go over to the Fiscal '23, Chapter 78, you see that we had $7,778,000. Right, so this calculation gave us less money than what we got last year. So they're going to hold us harmless. They're going to say, no, we're going to give you more than that, $7,680,000. We're going to give you at least the $7,778,000, plus, we're going to give you an extra $30 for every one of your students. And that is a note all the way at the bottom left-hand corner of that page. So, they took the $7,778, gave us $30 extra for all of our 940 students, 47 students, and they came up with $7,806. So, that, uh, the gap between there, and I have a slide that'll show that in a couple of slides, that gap between the $7,680 and the $7,806, that gap is our Hold Harmless. Right, so what the calculation gave us as our foundation aid, $7,680, they're going to give us more. So the amount of money they're giving us more is Hold Harmless, and it's about $130,000.
And, and, and so, Joanne, what is the significance then? Why do you refer to Hold Harmless in a negative way and hope that we will not be held, held harmless?
I can show you on a later slide. I, I'm not referring to it in a negative way. It's just disappointing that we're in Hold Harmless because we're not getting extra Chapter 70. So maybe I'm disappointed. It's not a negative thing, it's a positive thing, that we're getting Hold Harmless, because otherwise, we'd be getting $7,680,000, and we'd make, making $130,000 worth of cuts here. Joanne, in a further slide, will you explain what the alternative to Hold Harmless is, which is what we're really hoping for? Yes. Okay. In, in another year. But, yeah, there's a slide that shows those differences. Thank you, yeah. So then what the state also does is it looks at how many students are coming, are in the foundation enrollment for Gill and how many from Montague? And you can see that both towns saw a reduction of those choice and charter students out. And then their required contribution is also broken out by town, not just by district. So you can see those numbers there as well. So this is the document where we can see more. So if we look at Fiscal '24, all the way on the right, you can see our enrollment, 947. Foundation budget, $14,525. Foundation budget, fourteen million, five twenty-five. And then our per pupil. Foundation per pupil, which is the fifteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine. Our district contribution, whoops, sorry about that. District contribution and then our chapter seventy-eight, seventy-eight oh six. So we're getting an increase of twenty-eight thousand dollars in chapter seventy in fiscal twenty-four. Now, that's not very much money. And the hold harmless, like I said, is about a hundred and twenty-six thousand. So that's how much money extra they gave us that the formula didn't give us. But if you go back and you look at fiscal twenty-three, you can see that we had a growth in our enrollment. A thousand and twenty students up from the nine seventies, so we had a fifty student grow, growth. Our foundation budget grew nearly two million dollars. And once they subtracted the district contribution, the chapter seventy was seven million, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, or nearly six hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than the prior year. That's why I'm disappointed that we're in hold harmless. Because last year, we got six hundred and fifty thousand dollars extra from chapter seventy. This year, we're getting twenty-eight thousand. So the Student Opportunity Act is they're, uh, they're developing the foundation budget and the different categories of the foundation budget, so that way they grow. And as the foundation budget grows, the chapter seventy can grow. If our enrollment stays flat. And so if we look at like the surrounding districts, the Student Opportunity Act is not impacting many of the districts surrounding us. Because they've had a huge enrollment decline over the past ten or fifteen years or even twenty years. And so when you look at the hold harmless for some of the surrounding districts, that number is in the two million or three million dollar range. So the fact that we're at the one hundred and twenty-six thousand of hold harmless tells me that we should be able to get out of hold harmless in the next year and continue to be out of hold harmless and get the extra chapter seventy if our enrollment can stay flat. But I didn't expect the enrollment to decline in fiscal twenty-four. Because as I looked at our enrollment in the district, it was flat, it was stable. And so, you know, sometimes these numbers, they just, they change and you're not, there's nothing you can predict. So any other questions there?
Jennifer?
See anybody, so.
I apologize, I, I feel like I'm missing something that's probably very rudimentary and I'm not sure why, but so just even if we go back to fiscal year sixteen.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, sorry, the change from sixteen to seventeen, the enrollment increases by two pupils, two. Uh, the percent change is a positive number, but we're still in hold harmless. I think I thought, based on what you've said before and clearly I've misunderstood, is that we end up in hold harmless when the population or the, sorry, enrollment decreases. Uh, and so I'm just like following these numbers along, so those first you know, fiscal year sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, they're all hold harmless. And I see that there, you know, there, there's a less dollar amount in terms of increase from prior year. And then twenty twenty-one, you have these bigger numbers, three fifty, three hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred and thirty thousand. And then again, twenty-two goes down to hold harmless, twenty twenty-nine, and then twenty-three goes up to six hundred fifty thousand. I, I'm, I'm not connecting the dots. Maybe this is a different conversation, maybe I don't mean to take up time here, but I've just, I'm confused.
I think there's, there's a little bit more to it. So if we go back to fiscal sixteen, the Student Opportunity Act was not in effect. So they were not taking that foundation budget and growing it. And so we had been in hold harmless in years before that, we hadn't gotten extra chapter seventy in, you know, eight years before that fiscal sixteen. You know, just that twenty-eight thousand, thirty thousand, that's all.
Chapter seventy, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but chapter seventy is when you get, have more enrollment, the state supports you more, period.
Chapter seventy is state aid, so that's how we get our state funding.
Number of enrollment goes up, state aid increases, period. Is that right?
Not exactly.
Okay.
Foundation budget, so enrollment, the foundation enrollment creates foundation budget. And then we look at the district contribution, how much can the district afford? Subtract that from foundation budget, it gives you the chapter seventy-eight. So if you just did the math there, and I don't have a column that does that math, but the eleven million minus the six million, you're not getting the chapter seventy-eight that's sitting in that box in row G. Because we were held harmless by seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So that means the state gave us seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars that year more than what the formula said we should get. Happened again in seventeen and in eighteen. And then if you look at the hold harmless amount in nineteen, that's the year that the foundation budget started to be adjusted slightly, but started to be adjusted. And, but that hold harmless number, it shrunk from six hundred and seventeen thousand down to a hundred and twenty-three. So that was a five hundred thousand dollar growth in the chapter seventy calculation, so that was a good news year. And then in fiscal twenty, they adjusted that foundation budget some more, so in spite of having a reduction in enrollment of, you know, like twenty-seven students, we still saw growth in our foundation budget. And then we saw growth in our chapter seventy for the first time in a lot of years. And so we were all excited, this was, this was going, we were on a roll, we were going to continue to get money through that Student Opportunity Act and the implementation of that. We just knew, we were, we were in a good space. And then the pandemic hit. And when the pandemic hit, we lost a hundred students on our enrollment. And that's what you see in fiscal twenty-two. So when you, when you're building this budget, so right now, when we're building fiscal twenty-four's budget, our foundation enrollment is based on enrollment this past October. October of twenty-two, enrollment is used to build our fiscal twenty-four budget. So just get everybody out of the way here. So in fiscal twenty-three, we see a higher foundation enrollment. So enrollment was starting to come back after the pandemic. Kids were coming back to school. And then this year, I, I, I just don't know, I'm glad that kids are not choicing out and going to charter school. That's great. But it did impact, negatively impact our foundation enrollment and therefore our chapter seventy. So yeah, I'd be happy to try to come up with a chapter seventy calculation one oh one for everybody and explain this again, because when you only hear this like once or twice a year, it's really hard to get a handle on it.
Thank you, Joanne.
You're welcome. So then we have to look at the assessments. So when we plan our assessment, we look at what Montague is saying their affordable assessment is. And so back in the fall, the affordable assessment was three point four percent increase. So we built this budget assuming both Gil and Montague would pay four point, or three point four percent increase. And so the increase assessment would have been four hundred and forty-three thousand. But then when the minimum contributions come out, we're able to calculate the actual assessments, and that's what you see in table two. So the minimum contributions went in. And then we do the above minimum contribution. And you can see that Gil is seeing a decrease, a three point five percent assessment decrease. And that's really based on enrollment decline that impacted the minimum contribution. And then Montague said, we can pay four point two percent, so, or four point, yeah, right around that area. And so their assessment went up to four seventy-one. They're paying all of the assessment increase that we had anticipated. And so just because Montague said we can afford an extra percentage point, we thought that would give us more revenue, but in fact, it gives us less revenue because of the decrease to Gil. So these, this is the historical assessments for both towns. So we have tried our best to stay with Montague's affordable assessment, and so in the middle of the page there, you can see the percentages and those are, they're, they're pretty much right on whatever Montague's affordable assessment was, I think one year we went over. And all the way to the right, you can see the average assessment for Montague has been four point one percent. And for Gil, it's been one point eight percent. So when we look at the bottom of the page, we can see the enrollments in our buildings for the town of Gil students and the town of Montague students, and you can see those declines. So from fiscal sixteen through fiscal twenty-four, you can see that the enrollment has declined, forty-two students for Gil and sixty-seven for Montague. So Gil has seen a thirty-seven percent reduction in enrollment within our buildings. And I think that the enrollment decline in foundation enrollment is also pretty similar. So this explains why Gil's assessment has been lower and in a couple of cases, a negative, so reduction in assessment over the past eight years. When Montague's assessment had stayed relatively flat. So once we know the revenues, we know we have to reduce our chapter seventy, um, we're not getting access assessments, then we need to look at our budget and we need to decide on the expense side, what can we cut, what's changed since we initially started working on this? So I've summarized it here for you. Our overall budget is twenty, about twenty-seven point five million. And that includes our revolving and grants. So these are the changes that we made to the revenues from the original budget that we brought to you in January. So our chapter seventy, I had put in three hundred thousand as our potential increase in chapter seventy, and that came out in, in at twenty-eight, so we had to cut back about two hundred and seventy thousand on that. Charter reimbursement, according to the cherry sheet, has gone up. So we increased that by forty thousand. Transportation reimbursement, they are talking about reimbursing at ninety percent, so we're budgeting for that. Interest income, we changed banks, we've been receiving more interest than we had in the past. So we increased that twenty-five thousand. The town assessments for Montague went up eighty-three thousand and for Gil went down a hundred and seventeen thousand. And then we adjusted our circuit breaker, school choice and grants lines primarily for our special ed out of district tuitions. That went up significantly and we, we also had some increases in students going out. So the overall changes are a hundred and thirteen thousand dollar decline. And then on the expenditure side, these are the changes that we made. So we had to, you know, as we, we have those charter and choice numbers dropping in our, on our cherry sheet and in our current year fiscal twenty-three, that's really good news. But because it declined so much in one year, I worry that what if it goes back up that same amount in another year? So I'm, I'm a little nervous about decreasing our choice out and our charter out budgets, just in case those numbers don't decline as much as as much as it looks like they might. But I did decrease some more here to, to keep away from making cuts to programs or positions. We made some reductions on the choice and charter budget. So fingers crossed that these numbers come through and we don't see an increase next year. And then since we initially built the budget, we have more students placed in out of district special ed placements, and so we had to adjust, that would be number three, four, five, six and seven, we had to adjust those placements. The negotiable increases is really just adding a little something in there to balance the budget, the last minute number. That's where we plugged extra money in. We've had staffing changes since we built this budget. And so the seventeen thousand dollar savings is based on the savings that, the overall savings that we had from those staffing changes. And then in our school choice revolving, there's, there's letters over to the right and you can see what's general fund, circuit breaker, school choice and grants by the initials there. And so we also had staffing changes in our school choice revolving account. And then the only position that we are eliminating is a high school math teacher. And we brought that extra math teacher in due to the pandemic learning loss. And it has been unfilled for most of the year. And it's currently filled with a long-term sub. Brian or Gene, do either of you want to talk about that position?
Yeah, so the, the position was, um, proposed at the start of the pandemic with students being in, uh, you know, it's really starting off the year in a remote learning environment, we got some initial money. Um, just before ESSER, we looked at some of the data that we had in the district at the time related to um, high school math scores in particular, and so what we did was we shrunk the sections to increase um, the access to the teacher. And it was initially our plan um, to keep those sections uh, very, very small. However, heading into this school year, this current school year that we're in, um, the position wasn't even fully registered. So in other words, there were sections that really couldn't be opened, uh, because part of the, part of the staffing work that we had done over the past couple of years was also to add a science teacher um, to expand our innovation pathway-based programs. And, um, we've been able to take many of those sections, in fact, from the first semester. Some, some of the other teachers were under assigned. And so we were able to take those sections in the first semester and assign them to other teachers without, you know, increasing their, um, their minimum workload. However, what it really comes down to for this spring is really the need to cover just two sections that we can account for in the registration process for next year. So that, that, that puts us in a position where we won't be reducing a full-time teacher. Um, and we won't have to do it in the following school year when the ESSER funds that we're currently funding that position with run out.
Okay. Joanne, then I just wanted to keep our two capital requests.
Excuse me, Joanne, I think John had a question.
Yeah, I had a question on the previous slide, uh, Joanne. And, and that is, uh, the negotiable increases, would that represent the total amount that could go to unit A and C and possibly other units for this year for increases in salary?
It's the amount for fiscal twenty-four.
It's for, for.
And it's for all, all units that are not negotiated, which includes unit A and unit C, so they would have two years of increases in there. And non-union personnel that we have not negotiated salaries for.
I see, so that has to be divided amongst all, all personnel, then, okay. And, and so when we do calculations, we really have to bear that figure in mind, is that correct? That would be one of the constraints upon what we could do, you know, either.
That's how much we have in there for unit A, unit C and non-union, so yeah, I mean, that, that's what we have plugged in there. We have money in other funds, if there are people paid in other funds as well.
Okay.
And you'll find them all on line one twenty-three on the line item budget.
I see, so, so some funds are coming, some, some people are paid from budgets other than the general fund, is that correct?
Yes. And so these codes here after the titles are one seventy-six. That would be the cell on the line item budget that you would find those numbers on. And all of those numbers on your line item budget are also blue. So as you look through that budget, you'll find the blue numbers or the blue boxes with the white numbers in them for any changes that we made. So these two capital requests have not changed. These are the only two requests that we're making to the town of Montague. There's no new requests to the town of Gil. Close that up so we can see people.
Um, Bill, I think I see your hand.
Yeah, does this all of these numbers reflect uh, numbers that came out of the governor's proposed budget?
No, not exactly. Because chapter seventy-one, the number that they put in the budget for chapter seventy-one is sometimes based on our fiscal twenty-one expenses. Whatever the state knows for sure is how they base that. But I know what our fiscal twenty-three expenses are going to look like. And our fiscal twenty-four transportation reimbursement is going to be based on our fiscal twenty-three expenses. But I'm using their approximately their percentage that they are assuming right now for transportation, but I'm not using their exact numbers because I know a little bit more than them. I'm also not using exact numbers for choice and charter because I don't trust that exactly what we're spending this year is going to be exactly what we spend next year. And that's what those numbers are based on. So the chap, the cherry sheet numbers are really they're they're really estimates. They're not set in stone. The only number that is almost set in stone would be chapter seventy. Charter and choice are calculated based on the students that are attending choice or charter next year. But the calculation is based on who's attending attending choice and charter now. That's what's on the cherry sheet. So nobody knows who's going to be in choice and charter next year. It's all up in the air until people choose to go. So the numbers are not exact. The one number that is exact is chapter seventy.
Okay, the reason I ask is because there there was a a reduction in uh, choice out, I think of seven hundred grand. And then an increase um, in choice in. In any event, it uh presents a different picture than than what we've just listened to. And I just wanted to check with you to make sure um or to determine how you're adjusting the numbers.
Yeah, I don't think it was a seven hundred thousand dollar decrease, but um.
I'm foggy on those, you know, exactly where those numbers, but I thought that uh, the governor's budget, or I think that the governor's budget is more favorable um, than it would appear from this presentation. And that's fair to say, right?
Um, on choice and charter, here I have the choice and charter numbers. So school choice decrease on the cherry sheet is about three hundred thousand. And charter school decrease on the cherry sheet is about two hundred and fifty thousand. I didn't decrease them that much because I don't trust those numbers will be what we have next year.
Yeah.
These numbers are what they're saying it could look like this year.
Yeah.
It's all they have to go by.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Anyone else have a question for Joanne? Nick?
Is there a key or something for the line item budget that explains the object numbers? Or do we have a list of object numbers that correspond to the different bargaining units for salary lines?
Um. Key that shows the bargaining units, but if you look at an account, let me just open up my you look at an account number. Let's see, I'm going to go to one of the schools. So if you go to page, I don't know what page it is. Like line three hundred in that range on the line item budget.
Yep.
Okay, so we're in the Hillcrest Elementary School. And it line three fourteen says teacher salaries. So that's going to be unit A. So for the most part, if you back up to column F, and you see that number in column F, one oh five.
Right, that's actually what I'm talking about.
If that number starts with a one hundred, it's professional staff. If it starts with a three hundred, it's support staff. So for the most part, professional staff are unit A, support staff are unit C. Non-unit A and unit C staff would also be in those same categories. So administrative staff would also be one hundreds. Custodial staff cafeteria staff would also be three hundreds. All right.
Okay, that's what I was looking for because that that's what I thought it was, but I didn't want to be wrong.
Okay.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
John?
Yeah, in Ca- in California, we had this thing called the California School Accounting Manual. And if I wanted to know what a particular object code on a budget could be spent on, I would just look at that school accounting manual and it would give a list of what was appropriate uh, for that particular item. Does such a thing exist in Massachusetts?
Yes, we have, we have that, but the codes don't line up exactly. What they line up with is the one, right? The number starting with a one, like I just said, or starting with a three. And so it would just basically be that, a one or a three, five, six, seven, a five is a supply, a six is other, a four is a service. Right? And so the the state code says just has that single digit, one, two, three, four, five, six, where we have a three-digit code for that.
Do we have an idea of what percentage of our budget goes directly towards salary?
I'd have to do the math. I I mean, I can sort on it and figure that out, but I I don't know off the top of my head, but I can get it in just a few minutes. When you're all talking about something else, I can pull that number for you.
Okay.
Thanks, Joanne. John?
Uh, yeah, I was just gonna say that's a really great number. Uh, and in California budgets, line eleven hundred would be teacher salary. And I could always divide it by the total expenditures of a district to get the percentage that went to salary. And I could also add benefits or post-retirement as well. And then it was relatively easy to compare one district for another. And I would just do that from the union side so we could see whether or not we were getting comparative salaries in in West Contra Costa. So th- those are kind of the way, those are the ways I look at things when I uh, consider these things.
Anyone else have a question for Joanne? Okay, and you've also included in our packet, the line item budget as we were just referring to.
Yes, and any number in rows R through V that is blue is the number that I changed in making these adjustments.
And certainly before we vote at our next meeting, if you think of a different question you'd like to check with Joanne on, please don't hesitate. So that you can get any answers you want before we vote next time. Anything else?
All I have.
Okay, thank you, Joanne.
You're welcome.
Okay, next item in our business list is discussion about the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year calendar. Brian?
So this is just a preliminary, uh, not looking to take a vote or even really have that much discussion necessarily this evening, but really to give it to the committee in advance. Um, we by policy have to approve a calendar within the month of March and we have two more meetings. So given that we had pushed this meeting back from February twenty-eighth, that gave us the opportunity to give you a preliminary look at a a calendar that has been reviewed by um, the administrative team and is being proposed as the school year calendar for next year. Um, one of the other considerations is, uh, despite the fact that we don't have to formally um, get input from the Teachers Association. We've had a much more collaborative relationship with the GMEA and a lot of things, and they've been helpful in terms of problem solving. And so I have also shared it with the leadership of the GMEA to give input between now and when we're at, we actually vote on it. Um, so uh, just so that they can check because they, some of their membership did discover some issues um, with previous calendars. And so I thought we would just do that proactively as a, as a means of continuing our process of problem solving collaboratively with the union. Um, just as a side note, there are the same number of half-days as there were last year or early release days. There are the scheduled professional development days, and then we had again reduced the total number of data days that we had requested in the previous school year from four to two. We would like to maintain those two additional data days uh, for this school year and then the following school year look to potentially have those removed from the calendar and replaced with full days of school. You will note also that it looks to have students staff beginning on Monday, August twenty-eighth, students in one through twelve, beginning on August thirty-first with a two-day school week. And then they go to a four-day school week and a five-day school week. And then the final day of school for students in this calendar is scheduled to be June thirteenth. And then the day before the holiday break, we would end up having a full week of school. Um, December eighth, that week of December eighteenth through December twenty-second. So those are just some key items um, on this calendar. As you take a look at it, and we'll put it on a a subsequent uh, agenda for a a vote for approval. Hey Paige.
Any questions at the moment? Okay, and we will come back to that because we will be voting on it in the future. Thank you. Um, next on our list is discussion about the education plan included that will be included in the Hillcrest Statement of Interest. Brian?
So um, Jean Powers is uh, put together a bit of a presentation, and I do also want to say thank you to Jean for all of the hard work that she has been doing, in particular on the educational portion, educational plan portion of the Statement of Interest. Again, with this, what we wanted to be able to do was um to be able to break up a bit in advance, the sharing of information, because we would like to have this, this, the full statement of interest is a pretty lengthy document. And the educational plan is the largest portion of the document. So we thought we would share it as early as we could um, with you so that you could keep it with you, uh, you know, attached to the agenda to be able to look at between now and when the rest, the full statement of interest is presented for potential approval to school committee. So I'm going to hand things over to Jean and Diane um, who have put together a a little presentation to give you sort of the key features of the uh, Statement of Interest Education Plan.
Thanks, Brian. So the full education plan, the draft of it um, is linked into the agenda and it's a long document, so we wanted to go through and highlight some of the main components of it. Um, and so I'll share my screen and we'll get right into it. All right. So uh, if you're looking at the document, the table of content, table of contents is is vast. Um, we use the template from the MSBA um, documentation to make sure that we had everything covered, as well as reviewing some additional plans of projects that had been approved previously. So we kind of had some models to look at. And what we did as we went through the plan is really highlighted the current status of things in Sheffield and the things in Hillcrest. And then what are some of the proposed adjustments or changes to renovating or putting an addition on to Sheffield? So in the Statement of Interest process, and one of the things that um, we have to do is identify like, why? Why are we looking to um, request this funding for a renovation? And there are seven options, and these were the two that we chose. You know, elimination of existing severe overcrowding, and we'll talk a little bit about that. Um, we talked about it a lot in the plan. We are definitely overcrowded in both Hillcrest and Sheffield. Where we've got um, staff members using different spaces um, and other staff members having to move their spaces during their planning time in order to ensure that students could have private instruction that's needed for related services and other other classes. And then the replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. Um, and so we're looking to put an addition on to Sheffield and feeling as though that uh, Hillcrest is becoming an obsolete building. So in the kind of the actual application process of the Statement of Interest, Diane, I'm sorry, Joanne and Heath will be actually identifying a little bit more specifics about that. Um, but this is about the education plan. So um, if you go through the plan, there's lots of things in there, and I've tried to pull out some of the kind of big ticket items of things that we're looking at. Um, that would be identified here. So the administrative model is one. So right now we have two principles. We have a principle at each of the schools and combining, we would have one um, main principle with some support structures. So a director of early childhood education, um, someone who could really look at the pre-K, K and even transition into one. Um, there's a number of early intervention needs at the special education level for students. And so having someone who could really focus in on that area um, would be really beneficial. And we would have a continue to have a dean of students. So we're just, you know, obviously a committee will come together if we get approved and we'll really dig into what it might look like, but some ideas about multiple drop-off points um, for parent pickup and drop-off. Um, a localized bus pickup and drop-off area, having the pre-kindergarten program have its own entrance. Um, the pickup times are at different times, so it's really important to have a spot where they could have their clear pickups. Security cameras and upgrades of many different safety features would be embedded. And then kind of one of the big things that we're looking to to get from this building is an addition of a family and community resource center. So this would be kind of, it has its own entrance. Um, it would be locked to the school. Um, it would have like a buzz-in system. So um, it could be used during the day for playgroups. We have some playgroups that currently meet up at Hillcrest um, from some of our local community groups. Um, but other family and community events that could take place outside of school hours over the summer. And um, our current family engagement coordinator's office is in central office, and we will look to relocate that position um, into that space um, to continue to build partnerships with our community and our families. Some other kind of different ideas, uh, so reading specialists, so you know, thinking about combining really two schools and um, adjusting so that our reading specialists, currently the Hillcrest focus on K to one. Um, we would add two, and so we would say, you know, one set, two of our reading specialists will focus on K to two. One would focus on um, three to five. And the idea would be they have their own two classrooms. Um, there's actually a visual model in the full document. And they'd share a literacy closet. So we have some some pockets of literacy closets and um, in both schools where teachers can get books, um, you know, borrow books from this kind of uh, you know, storage area where they can give students books that are at their reading level. Um, and so this would be a really great tool for all of our our teachers and then you know, have kind of a conference room in there for for our data meetings. So continuing to build on using reading and math data to make decisions. Um, we would combine our math interventionists into one classroom. Again, that would be very beneficial for them as well as sharing supplies and materials. Kind of creating um, kind of a cluster classroom for our ESL teachers. And this would be a way to have breakout spaces um, as well as moving the Spanish interpreter and community liaison's office up into that space. Um, that way there can be some, you know, connection and communication. I'm looking for a nice, large conference room, um, some planning workspaces, so a little bit more than just a teacher's lounge, but some real um, workspaces for collaboration. One of the other kind of big areas is based on enrollment and um, Sarah Burstein has put some information in the plan about kind of why we're looking at this, what do the numbers look like? But we're looking to possibly to add a fourth pre-kindergarten classroom based on kind of the demand we have right now and the waitlist for our our preschool program. Um, and then looking to have bathrooms, larger bathrooms, bathrooms that are more accessible for students in the pre-K classrooms. Same with kindergarten, looking to have some kindergarten classrooms that are are attached and and usable. Same with kindergarten, looking to have some kindergarten classrooms that are are attached and and usable. Um, kind of one of the big components about. Space has been our related service staff, um sharing space and not being able to have dedicated locations so that they would have their own dedicated spaces. And then looking to have kind of a counseling staff cluster of offices. And so again, there's a visual in the full plan where. You know, you kinda have some shared space and some breakout space, but then you have kind of the counseling staff centrally located um for, for all students. Looking at food services, the idea of a centralized kitchen, so one kitchen with two cafeterias. Um, so whether it's, you know, kind of a kitchen in the middle and two cafeterias on the side. Um, but the idea would be that um we could separate break grade levels and you could stagger serving lunch, um so you could get more lunches in. Um, so we'd look to build a larger kitchen that would be able to, to provide for this. Flexible classroom space, um so we can continue to build the use of mobile technology. Um, dedicated media literacy center with our, within our library. Um, another space concern is that our related arts teachers, um specifically at Hillcrest have a lot of sharing of space. At Sheffield, there's some sharing. There's also. Music on the auditor, um auditorium stage, science goes into the classroom. Um, so this would be a chance to really make sure that they had their own dedicated spaces. Um, a development of a specialized program for pre K to two students with the, on with autism spectrum. And that really, we've seen the demand, especially in that, that age group. Um, and so having a specialized program would really support our students pre K to. Uh, maker space, so true maker space. We write, you know, our STEM teacher for our STEM special classroom. Um, it travels to classrooms and doesn't really have a, a really innovative space, so looking to do that. You know, the gymnasium and auditorium, um adding renovations to that, um whether it's from seating to, to sound and technology, obviously keeping their character and their charm because they're um. You know, very loved by the town. Two separate playgrounds, one for early elementary and one for upper elementary. You know, one of the things we talked about is keeping the little league fields in place so that we work the building around that and then building some outdoor educational facilities, learning spaces, gardens. Um, you know, recycling, composting locations for really some um educational learning experiences outside um of the building. And so this is just kind of a, the conclusion that's written in there and I know it's a lot of, of words on the page here, but really, you know, the idea is that we wanna make a flexible learning environment. That meets the needs of students of tomorrow, right? So this would be if we were approved, as Joanne's kinda shown, this is a number of years out, so we wanna plan for things we might not know about yet. Um, you know, we wanna make sure we meet the developmental needs that we're taking into account all the different types of learners. And that, you know, one of our, our mottos are in uh that we've been really promoting is growing together. We're a district that grows together. And I think, you know, what better way to do that than expand an elementary school that helps our students grow um in the town of Montague. So that's a quick overview, um again, of a, of a really long document. Um, Diane, I don't know if you want to add anything about any of the programming that we talked about. I think you might be muted.
Not muted, just needed to turn up my audio setting on Zoom. Sorry about that, everyone. Um, yeah, I, I, if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to entertain questions. And I just wanna really commend Jean, um the elementary principals, the folks who really put time in and working on this, Joanne, Heath, Brian. It is, uh, the educational plan itself is about a forty-five page document and uh, you know, and we're not done yet. So. Uh, it, it is, um, it's been a lot of work, but it's also been really exciting. And so I just, um, and I think. As Jean had said, growing together is, is, has been our motto and I think a new school building. At the elementary level will um, will provide for that and hopefully. Can move forward with this application and, and hopefully get the approval so that we can put this in place for the children in the future.
Thank you. So yeah, if there's any questions on, on that and again, um, you know, there's a lot more detail in the plan itself. Um, and the next meeting, I believe that will present kind of the other components of the statement of interest, kind of the other questions. Um, that will come out of Joanne and Heath's office.
Okay, thank you so much. I don't see any other questions at the moment. Um, we will be voting on this plan to be submitted. Toward the end of the month, Brian, I believe.
Yeah, our objective is to have the completed plan, the completed statement of interest uh to the committee for a vote for March twenty eighth. In a worst case scenario. Um, we could do April eleventh, but the deadline is the fourteenth and I'd rather not push it. That close to the deadline in case something gets messed up on a technicality like an electronic signature or something like that and then. You know, we're not able to put it in, so.
Okay, so we'll look forward to voting out on it on the twenty eighth. Okay, thank you. Um, we are skipping.
Bill has a hand.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, thanks.
I'm just curious, uh, in the administrative group that's putting all this together or whatever group it is. Are you looking at any kind of finances? In turn, or is that even required when you're submitting a, a proposal for? Support on funding, I'm assuming that's what this is.
For the application process, there's not really a consideration. It's, it's a matter of um. Being able to get an application in and um, you know, the, the start, the foundation of the process is. To have that application accepted before we, you get deep into finances. I can't remember off the top of my head if. Uh. I think the feasibility study, which, you know, typically runs around a hundred thousand dollars would need to be integrated into. Uh, the town budget, uh, once the statement of interest, if the statement of interest were accepted by M S B A and so there would be time. For us to be able to communicate with the town. We have made the town committees aware that we're, we're submitting the statement of interest, so.
Yeah, I can just, you know, reflect on, this is a real comprehensive uh document you've put together. It's really progressive. Um, it's, and uh, I wish you well. I think that it's appropriate to bring forward, but I'm just always conscious, the first question. It's gonna be thrown at you is how much is this gonna cost?
Yep.
And what are you gonna cut out? So, that's not my choice, but thank you for your, for your work.
Thanks, Bill.
Joanne, do we have any current estimates of what um Mass School Building Authority funding percentages are coming in at?
No, because they're all based on individual districts. So when we look at this, we have just been using the reimbursement rate that we got when we did the window project at Sheffield and that was seventy-six percent. When the high school was renovated, it, it was reimbursed at ninety percent. I don't think they go to ninety percent anymore, but.
Right. I did remember that it was quite high on the high school.
Right. They could go to the high seventies and low eighties percentage wise. And we have talked to the town officials in Montague about this and. By the time this gets off the ground, I believe the D P W will be just about done being paid for. So. By the time their payments would start, so, you know, the timing actually looks pretty good.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, um, we're not going to deal with um item D at this moment. We're not gonna talk about the um insurance commission right now. That'll come up later in the. Another month or so. Um, we'll move on to addressing pandemic learning loss and I think that's probably Jean again. You're still with us, right, Jean?
Yes, I am. Round two, second presentation. Um, so I wanted to highlight. Some of the mid-year assessments that took place. Um, you know, we talked, we've been talking a lot about pandemic learning loss and a lot about. You know, the different types of assessments that we're doing and so I put together a presentation about our I ready assessments. Um, one of our, you know, the assessment we've talked about, it, it assesses math and reading. Um, we're currently using it K to twelve and a number of the. Data points I'll talk about are K to eight, just based on um the number of students that were assessed in these areas. And again, it's just as a midpoint and um just wanted to highlight where we are. Um, so what is student growth? So the, you know, we've talked about this with M C A S a little bit, right? So students have an achievement. Score and then they have a growth score. So how much growth are they making from one assessment to the next? So that's what I, I pulled from our I ready report is really looking at growth and so just an overview of what the data is that you're gonna be looking at. Um, I already sets two, two growth goals. So when students take their assessment in the beginning of the school year. Based on how they do compared to students in the similar, um, you know, similar schools, similar grade. Um, and how they've done, they measure what would be a typical growth. So what's the average growth of students? Um, at each grade level and then they give students that number. That's what we want students to meet. That's our, our goal. Our goal is that we get a hundred percent of students meeting their typical growth. And they then provide a stretch growth um number. And nationally, between twenty and thirty percent of students achieve their stretch goals and this is where students who may have been further behind. Have a larger growth to catch up. Um, and also students who are proficient, kind of push them to the above um grade level proficiency. So what that looks like visually, and you can see here, this is an example of two different third grade students and so this first student. Um, Alex, he scored in the two grade levels below and he has a typical growth of scoring twenty-seven points more. Um, that gets him closer to being on grade level and a, a stretch growth would be forty-three points, which would get him pretty much on grade level. And then you have the other student Bianca who scored higher and has a similar stretch growth, but it puts her higher up into. The mid, late or above grade range. So each student has their own individual um typical growth and stretch growth. And so what we, what I pulled is. Um, this is K to eight. So high school, the, because we're doing our assessments in a sister model. We aren't looking at their growth goals. Um, we are looking at um K to eight because being assessed three times during the school year. So this is math. So this is the median percent towards the typical growth. So halfway through the year and I should, I should go back and just reiterate that the growth goals are for end of year. So you take the assessment in the fall and then they give you, okay, by the end of the school year, we think your typical growth will be this number and your stretch growth will be this number. So we're mid-year, um, and fifty-nine percent, um, our median percent have, is progressing towards the typical growth. Um, so this is the, in the average annual growth for a student at their grade level based on their baseline placement. So we're making some really good growth here towards our typical growth. And then this is by grade. So this first area, um where it's annual typical growth. So you can see by grade, um, and this is for math and um if you notice K, we had um K do the assessment later in the. The fall, so they, they don't have a comparison. They've just done one assessment. Um, but you can see that the medium progress towards the typical growth per each grade level. And the current percentage of students in that grade level that have already met their typical growth. So for example, in grade six, forty-six percent of students have already met their typical growth. From the beginning of the year to the middle of the year. Um, we have some other big numbers with forty-three and seventh grade forty-two. And then you look at the stretch growth and if you remember. From an earlier slide, only twenty to thirty percent of students nationally meet their stretch growth each year. It's that like kind of um, you know, goal for everyone. And we have made some progress definitely here and we have some places um where we've had a high percentage. Of students, so our twelve percent, sixteen percent, seventh and eighth grade have met that stretch goal. Um, so we're on track to meet m- most of, not all of our. Typical growth and you know, the goal is a hundred percent. It, it's rare that it's a hundred percent, but we wanna get as close as possible to that. Um, the other key piece here is the percentage of students that improved. So even if students didn't meet their typical growth or their stretch growth yet, which really they're not supposed to do till the end of the year. We saw a significant increase in placement. So, you know, students are making growth in math, K to eight. From their last assessment. Um, and so then just another kind of visual to represent our growth here in math is. Um, looking at the domains and the distribution. So what we want to see. Is the green to increase and the red to decrease, right? Yellow typically will, we want it to shrink, but. If you can see mid or above grade level, we're at eleven percent. So this is K to eight. So this is all of our students K to eight who took both the fall and the winter assessment. In the winter or excuse me, in the fall, it was, we had four percent. So we went from four percent to eleven percent in this category. We've gone from nine percent of students to sixteen percent in this category. Forty-five to forty-six, that's typical to stay similar because you have some students moving around, but we did. Go from twenty-one percent to fourteen percent. That means we have less students. Two grades level below and we went from twenty to thirteen. So on the, the red side, you wanna see the num, the percentage go down and on the green side, you wanna see it go up and that is happening. So now for reading.
Excuse me, Jean, just for a minute. Uh, Jennifer, do you have a question?
I do, thank you. Um, so you're measuring this based on tests of some kind, like standard achievement tests or some similar form of? Okay.
Yeah, so our I ready assessment is um a, so it's a computer-based assessment that students take three times a year. And they take an assessment for math and then they take one for reading.
I apologize, I'm sure you've said this like a hundred times, but I.
No, no, that's no problem. Um, and it's an adaptive, adaptive assessment, meaning that if they, they're supposed to get fifty percent of the questions wrong. Because it's adaptive. So if they get a question right, it gets harder. If they get it wrong, it gets easier. And so it's trying to find that like sweet spot for students. Um, and so we do these assessments during the year and our K to eight students also. Use the instructional platform where they have individualized personalized lessons. That they do throughout the year, that teachers have them do at different times during, you know, during the school day. And so it's one of our assessments. We use other assessments for reading and math, um, but since it's a, a full K to eight of the same assessment, I thought it was important to talk about.
And it's like objectively, like this is the correct answer of this math thing. Or English thing or grammar thing and this is an incorrect answer. It's not like.
Correct.
Creating like a priority of values. It's just like objectively, you're learning or not learning these basic things.
Yes, so they give the assess, yeah, so they give the assessment that you start in the fall at grade level. Um, so if I'm in seventh grade, I'm gonna start the seventh grade assessment and it's gonna kind of determine if I'm at grade level, below grade level, multiple grades below grade level. Um, and you can kind of get into the details where you can look at, you know, the, the areas that's subject specifically, you know, is it geometry, is it measurement and data where students are struggling?
And the grade level is state defined or federal, federally defined?
So this is a national normed assessment, so it's, it is national. Um, we use the Massachusetts version, so when you log into I ready, it's got. We're obviously Massachusetts, so everything is aligned to the Massachusetts standards.
Um, thank you.
Yeah.
I was, I'm sorry, I was gonna add, it's a criterion reference test, so it's based on standard, so it's not like, it's not a norm reference test like the S A T or the P S A T.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, okay. I, I remember standard achievement tests. Lifetime of them. Thank you.
And then, and then the mid-year assessment um is assigned based on how the student did in the fall. So they don't start at square one again. They start where they basically left off. So this is reading.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, this is reading and uh K to eight as well. So if you remember, we were at fifty-nine percent. Towards our typical growth, um, and with reading, that was for math and reading, we're at fifty-three percent. And looking again at our um assessments and again, that typical growth. We have a number of students who have already met their typical growth. Um, you know, I love seeing this, this kindergarten growth, right? So, you know, we're really looking to get close to a hundred percent there. And then that annual stretch growth. So again, we have a certain percentage of students who have already met that. And that's great because um they're, you know, they're, if they were below, they are catching up, right? So this. You know, really relates to pandemic learning loss because we're really able to measure if students come, are coming in. You know, at a start of a grade and they are multiple years below, we really can track if they're making progress to catch up. Um, and then if you look at our percentage of students who improve placement, again, it's not um. You know, not necessarily every student who got their, met their typical growth yet or their stretch growth. But, but that they're making some improvement, whether it's one point, ten points, fifty points. And then just to show reading in the same way. So again, our, the green side, we wanna see it go up, so we went from fifteen percent to twenty percent. So again, our, the green side, we want to see it go up. So we went from fifteen percent to twenty percent. Thirteen to nineteen, and we want to see it go down on the red side. So seventeen to fourteen, eighteen to fourteen. So that means students who, we had more students. In the red who are moving either into the upper red or the yellow or the green and more. That are moving into the green from either yellow or red. So I'm very, I'm, I'm excited about this. I think it shows a lot of growth, um, and a lot of promise, um. And there's definitely continuing to be areas where we're going to focus on and dig into. We also have other data points, so different types of assessments we use for reading and math. So this isn't the only. Um, the tool we use when we sit down to look at students and during our data meeting times and decide, you know, what students need, um, what teachers can. You know, can reteach and adjust their practice. Um, but it is definitely one of our, our tools and it, it gives us some great, some great data to look at. So I know there's a lot, but if there's any questions, um.
Bill?
I think it'd be interesting to, I don't think you can do it in the first year. But. Your kindergarten was very high, ninety three percent, close to meeting great expectations. Um, and that's the first group. That has never been in school before. Um, the pandemic or anything like that as opposed to kids. That were in the social setting and then got withdrawn from it into isolation. So I think as you go down the line, it'll be interesting to track. That group coming in and how they progress in our system. As well as the kids that have been impacted directly by the pandemic and blah, blah, blah. You know what I mean?
So. I think that's a great point, Bill. Yeah, I definitely think that. That's the, that's one of the classes to look at. I think the other class we look at is our second grade class, who a number of them. You know, and kind of the opposite, the number of them didn't go to, to kindergarten. Um, or did it virtually and how that impacts. So it is interesting, you know, it is interesting to think about the longevity. For sure.
Yep.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much, Jean.
Did I? Christina, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Raising my, sorry. Okay, um, looking at a study, um, I'm looking at a study that says. That students, um, who do I ready instruction with fidelity, per, you know, perform better on the test. Than the diag- on the diagnostic than students who don't do, uh. Go along with I ready instruction with fidelity. Obviously, it makes sense. If you practice with the program, you'll do better on the test and right? If you practice kicking a soccer ball, you'll get better at kicking a soccer ball. Um, you mentioned that, um. The students do, do I ready instruction, um, or I was just wondering if you could speak a little bit more. You mentioned it like quickly. Um, embedded within, uh, something else you were saying. I was just wondering if you could add on to that.
Definitely. So our elementary teachers use I ready, the instructional platform. Um, a couple of times a week, often it would be during either math time or reading time. Where students are getting some individualized instruction from the teacher. They may be rotating into different. Um, stations or groups. And one of the things that teachers will often do is have students spend fifteen, twenty minutes on their I ready. Instructional assessments. Um, and so what that is, is once the assessment has been created. Or completed, it, it determines what the student needs for practice. Um, and so if a student is below grade level, they'll get, you know, if they're in first grade and they have some standards where they are falling in the kindergarten level. The, the diagnostic will assign lessons and activities for them to do. That would help to close that gap for them, to build those foundational skills. Um, so often teachers are using it a couple of times a week. Um, in our middle school program, we have students on our study skills at least once a week for thirty minutes. They're doing one math and one reading. Um, and, you know, teachers at different schools kind of encourage it in different ways. We did have. A, a awesome campaign at Sheffield last, um, I think it was a couple of weeks ago where our math interventionist. Looked at the I ready data and noticed that, um, geometry, that domain of geometry was, was a struggle for many students. And so they put together a campaign to get students, so it was a competition between the different classes who could complete, complete more. I ready, there were students completing I ready at home and, and you could, you see a growth in that one area, um. Because students are spending more time kind of getting tho- those supports where they might not. You know, be looking at geometry in that moment in their curriculum, but you know, jump, you know, shapes and different structures. But by using some of the class time to go through the I ready instruction, it, it did seem to grow. Um, I did see one report, um, I was trying to do some research about I ready and MCAS correlation. Um, I did see one report, again, it's one report where it was a math assessment. It was K to eight. And, uh, they saw a positive correlation between the use of I ready diagnostics and instructional platform in positive. Correlation with MCAS scores. Um, I don't, I think it was like a couple of years ago and I, again, I, I don't remember who did the study, but. I think there's definitely conversation out there about these types of assessments and whether they're predictors for standardized tests as well.
Brooke?
Yeah, I would just like to add too, as someone, um, who's kind of jumping around this field right now. Um, I ready is a very widely known kind of assessment tool, um, and they actually right now are partnering with Massachusetts. So that is something that's kind of a state sanctioned program. So it's a really good thing to be working with right now in accordance to the sort of things like MCAS. Because we've kind of scaled back on MCAS with the pandemic. So there's not a lot of guidance on where you should be. So for Massachusetts to kind of sanction one of these programs and then for us to adopt it feels to me like a really good path. For making sure students are at the MCAS expected level, which obviously is going to lead to graduation rates. Um, and the hope and dream is that every student would be able to get a high school degree. So I think that that's, um, the right path based on the programs that I know. So. Awesome, Jean. I really like seeing the data.
Thanks, Brooke.
Anyone else? Christina?
Yeah, I'd like to, um. Yeah, I'd like to just add in this, you know, I think we've talked a lot about assessments in the, on these calls and heard a lot about like what assessments students are taking. And you've mentioned that there's the I ready, I know there's other ones going on in schools as well. I'm not going to conjure all the, like, the list of all the things that kids are. Um, being, are taking MCAS coming up. Um, and like, yes, what Brooke just said is true, like the goal is like high school graduation and also. A goal is like lifelong learning and love of learning and be able to like go into the world and be like self motivated. To know how to solve problems and perform in a career, which I don't have to take standardized tests in my profession. Um, and so not, not necessarily for right now, but I think at some point in a school committee meeting, I'd be interested in what. Um, what other activities are going on in schools that might be, um, about, uh, whether they're assessment based or just, um. Yeah, maybe assessing in a different way that isn't a standardized test. Like are there project-based learning activities going on? Um, what, what are the other activities that are rounding out the curriculum? Like this was an amazing presentation. I don't mean to say anything contrary to that. Um, and the results are really encouraging. Um, but I think just rounding out that picture, I think would be interesting and I would love to hear. You know, your thoughts, um, on that at some, potentially at some future date, um, if not right now, because I know we're already. I'm committed.
Yeah, I, I would love to, um, put together kind of a presentation of some of the curricular highlights across the district. Um, and share that with you all in the committee. Um, I think that would be really, really great. So I'm happy to do something for one of our upcoming meetings.
That sounds great. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank you a- again for bringing that up as, as part of the. Research and, and conversation, uh, that I've had, um, recently with a couple of the principals. Um, as we're also looking forward as a district, you know, we'll, we'll have one more year in this. Uh, long-term, three-year, long-term, uh, district. Goals that, that we are using to guide us. I think that's a really important consideration also for us as an administrative team. To take into our summer retreat, in particular in the category of student engagement. Because as I've done some of my research around, well, what got dropped during the pandemic. Um, that is one of the considerations that the district was putting a great deal of emphasis on. And it, to, to some degree, it stopped, um, at least from. From the view of having it be driven by, um. Driven by the district as, as a, as a district-wide goal and then funneling down to building base, funneling down to the classroom and the experience of the child. So I really appreciate you bringing that, that, bringing that concept up because it does. We should also see that those activities will, will move that data forward even further. So they're deep, they're deeply entwined. Thank you.
Brooke? Yeah, just kind of adding on to that specifically, I would love to see, um, for instance. When you brought up that the geometry skills were low and we looked to target those I ready areas. It would be great to see too, like an additional activity. Like I kind of thought you were going to say, oh, there was a school competition that had to do with geometry. Um, and that I was starting to get really excited about, but then to hear that they're practicing the program, I kind of got on Christina's wavelength where I was like, oh. Practicing the program is not necessarily reflective of that growth outside. So I'm sure that there's already things happening and I would love to hear about those things that are happening that are targeting those specific areas. That were kind of recognized by this data.
Sure. Yeah, happy to do that.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, I just want to add, I think, uh, a large component to all of that type of conversation. Has to do with how you view the assessment. And so having, uh, different types of assessing going on. And that's, I always go back to, uh, the portfolio. Um, which goes with the child throughout their term. Uh, so you can see development, uh, in many different ways, but all of that is, I, just so long as we're doing. Additional assessment behind, beside the standardized issues. Um, I think is a, is a good thing. Or would be a good thing if we're doing it. Thanks.
Yes, yeah, we're doing, um, we have multiple assessments for reading, at least, uh, three. Um, and then on top of the I ready, and then for math, we have, uh, two other assessments we use to measure student growth. And I think maybe Diane had something to add as well.
I'm getting excited here. Um, it is sort of late in the night too, but I still feeling level enthusiasm. The I ready platform, because it's adaptive, the feedback that I've received from some of our special education teachers, particularly at the elementary level. Is that it allows students to work on a platform next to their peer and have that instructional model be able to. Adapt to what their learning level need is. And we have seen good growth with our special education students. Using the instructional model with fidelity, um, it's available at home. We've had some families who've really kind of gotten on to. Um, using it at home and kids benefit when they see their own success, right? It, it, it self-perpetuating. And one other thought and kind of a note for this school committee in the future, and I know Jean and I have had some excited conversations about this, is. Looking at, you know, the potential of introducing the idea of student-led conferences where students are beginning to select pieces of their work. Whether it's project-based, whether it's, you know, artistic in nature, whether it's sort of proficiency and, you know, uh, achieved on an I ready assessment. But that level of engagement and, and, and participation in, in their learning and in selecting those pieces of work. And it's something that, um, we've got a lot of work that we've been doing, but that is definitely still on the docket as we think about. Um, engaging our kids and, and, and being kind of critical thinkers and, um, demonstrating their skills in that way. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you all very much. Thank you, Jean. Thank you, Diane.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is discussion about appointment to the open Montague School Committee seat. Um, we have not received any letters of interest to my knowledge, and I think it's important to note the fact that. Um, just so that people listening in occasionally, um. And even regular listeners would realize this is just a seat that has remained open for a while. We have not had a variety of seats open recently. This is just one that, um, has not been filled recently. So we are still bringing that to people's attention. Um, but that also leads us to the next item, which is school committee member terms. Because this is the time of year that people wanting to run for a school committee will be taking out papers. And so this is a good time to mention that to everyone, including ourselves. In your packet is a sheet that shows each of the current members when our term began, when it ends. And just as a reminder, anyone who was appointed to fill a term when someone else needs to leave. That term is only filled by that person until the next election. So if you were appointed during the year, you would need to take out papers and run, um, in the, in the continuing election. And we do have that information. We've put together, um, anyone wanting to run for school committee. The papers can be obtained and from and returned to the administrative assistant to the superintendent. That's in the superintendent's office. That's Tara McCarthy. Um, I believe the papers will be ready later in the month. Am I correct, Brian?
Uh, no, the papers need to be submitted by, um, March. Uh, Tara, if you could clarify this, um, March twenty seven, March twenty ninth, I believe. Um.
Yeah, I can just set up my notes here and see what we.
I was going to look that up before the meeting.
We really, we want to, if you wanted to email either, uh, me or Tara. That, you know, we could email nomination papers back as soon as we have them. I will also add that, um. As far as signatures, that you certainly could come to the central office where. Several of us who work here are Montague residents and would be happy to sign, uh, papers for, um. For any of the folks that are currently on the committee who are in, might, are interested in, um. Getting their, their names on the ballots for the May election.
Uh, yes, so completed nomination papers are due in our office no later than four P M on Monday, March twenty ninth. And are they available, available now? They are not available yet. We hope to have that by the end of the week. Perfect. That's what I wasn't sure of and thank you so much. Um.
You can email, uh, if it makes sense, we'll email the, the entire committee when we have the papers available.
Great. And then they can be picked up and returned to the office. Um, one thing that needs to happen when someone takes the papers. And collects the signatures, you will need to indicate on it how long a term you are running for. And be, generally speaking, each, um, a term is, uh. Consists of three consecutive years, but since we have some terms that have, people have had to leave and someone has replaced it. There will be two spots in GIL that are available. One will be a three-year term and one will be a one-year term. In Montague, we will have one two-year term and two three-year terms that people can run for this year. So that information I thought might be helpful for people too, when they're thinking about it. They do need to indicate on the papers what length of term they are running for.
Bill?
But you can't run for a three-year term and say, I'm only running for one year, right?
You can say whatever you want, once you're elected, Bill. But you have to pick.
I, I want to make a, a plea for people. We don't need old men like me filling up these spaces. We need more school. Parents to come on board and make the dive and, and run. I'll sign your papers if you want. Multiple times, but only one will count.
Right. I, I mean, I, I think to a degree, I, I appreciate the appeal. I think we need a variety of community members. I think there's room for one older female, one older male or anyone else. But there's also room for a real variety of opinions and that's what we benefit for. I mean, I think we have a really good committee because we have a variety of people with a variety of life experience. John?
Y- yeah, I, I, I really wish that there was someone. Who had more community connections than me who would run, someone who had more knowledge. All I have is general knowledge. Um. But, um, I'll take out papers on the last day if no one else does, because it has to be, you know, continued. Uh, but, uh, I really would like to see, uh, so do you think it's worth writing? A, uh, uh, something to be published in the Montague Reporter, you know, describing what the school committee does? And encouraging some.
You certainly could do that. You certainly could. Yes. Um, I mean, but I, uh, but not to, to dismiss someone who doesn't. Have a, a long-term connection to the community yet. I think. connection to the community yet. I think all perspectives are helpful. And I think um a variety really keeps, keeps the information fresh. Brian, did I see you?
Yeah, just the, the composition of this committee is um is, is really an asset to the district. There, there is a variety of experience that lends itself well to um to what the, the group really needs to do overseas, ask good questions and and, you know, Bill's selling himself short. Um, that his experience is invaluable uh in, in public service and, you know, uh I, I think all of you bring a variety of assets, but as a group, you know, to be able to have people who have backgrounds in education, to people who have backgrounds in finance, to technology, uh, to public service, um. We feel very lucky for sure. When I talk to other superintendents about the composition of their school committee and what the district, their districts are not able to get done as a result of it. Um, you know, I feel very fortunate to live in this town and raise my children here.
Thank you. And, and it's true. I would encourage anyone to please think about serving on the committee. Um, and if a term ends up being longer than um, you can really fulfill as much as you can do as much appreciated as well. Because sometimes things change. People get on with the idea they'll be on three years and things might change. But um, we had one member actually that, you know, moved shortly after she was elected and was, you know, we were all disappointed, but things happened like that. So. All right, uh, Jennifer?
Uh, I think just to John's point, it might not actually be the point he was trying to make, but what I heard was that um in some ways, I'm not sure that we are uh I don't know, engaging the community in the ways that might be compelling, you know, like all that to say, maybe we, maybe a person doesn't know what it means. What is the contribution desired from a, a school committee pers- uh, member or like, what are the kinds of topics? Or, or the various life experience that might be useful? I think all to Jane's point and Brian's point, all experiences are useful, but like, I don't know that we're doing a good job and I feel the same way about finance committee and other committees. I don't a- and just community engagement in general with the town. I don't know that people understand exactly what the opportunities are and what the, the sort of, the, the usefulness of anyone participating is for the community and for themselves. Like, I've certainly learned a lot and it's been a, a benefit, even though I'm you know, I have no children, I, whatever. But so, yeah, I'm not sure that we're doing a good enough job engaging the community. And so that, that's, it's a topic worth maybe discussing in the future.
Hmm.
Not now, because this meeting's way too long.
It's not way too long yet, but it's getting longer. Okay, thank you. Um, next item is the last one under business, discussion about the Turner's Falls.
Christina has something.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, it's the second time I did that. Um, I just wanted to quickly add that we are going to, going to in person um, at the end of March. Is that right?
Um, right. At the end of March, it expires unless it's continued. So beginning in April, we will be meeting in person. Um, yes.
Yeah. So two thoughts there. One, that seems like a more meaningful way to potentially be interacting with the community. It's a gathering space. I've never been a part of one of those, but you know, that, that is, um, I see that as a hopeful um, outcome um to respond to your point, Jennifer. And, but I'm of two minds because I also think it might make burdens for certain types of people to join the committee. Um, it is harder to be in person. Um, as a mom of a young child, it will be harder for me to come. Um, I will still be doing it, but I mean, for variety, myriad reasons, um, it will be harder. So, um, just wanted to throw that out there.
Yes, I, I, good point. I, I hope it's not a problem. And I do think of both sides of that. It's nice to be together physically. But when people were ill, had family responsibilities, even were exposed to COVID during the last few years, we still were able to have them at our meetings, which was really helpful. So. Brooke, did I see your hand?
Yeah, Jean, don't, am I making it up? Um, that you said that we might be able to vote on a hybrid option or something? So like.
There has.
It would have to be in person.
Yeah, there has always been a hybrid option available under state law, if any particular committee votes to allow it. The complicating factor is it's right now, the way it goes back to pre-COVID is you have to have a quorum of the members in person, including the chair. And then other people can remote in if they want to. Um, my only experience with that was long before COVID and the only way to remote in was telephone and it was not very successful. In fact, I've been in some hybrid meetings uh with video during um COVID and some of them have been challenging.
Yeah, the biggest challenge I can see there based on that is the having a quorum in person. So that's something we can definitely consider, um, because I love that idea, Christina, of keeping that option open to community members, because I think that could help us engage more individuals that might not be able to come in person. Um, so certainly an option we can consider moving forward.
Hmm, for sure. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, the next and last item is discussion about the Turner's Falls High School pool naming proposal. We have been given a proposal. We have included the policy again for you to see and the proposal. Brian, would you like to speak to that?
Sure, there's just, um, I wanted to add that there were notes, uh, Christopher Barnes held um his uh school council friends of Turner's Falls High School meeting and uh although it was lightly attended, um, I believe everybody that was there outside of Christopher is an alum and um they were very supportive of naming the pool after Wesley Snapp. So I just included those um, in the document and then uh was going to ask the school committee to set a date for the actual vote for the naming.
Hmm. This would be a good time to do that, I think. I agree.
And so I'm not sure. I just want to make sure that we get back in touch with those folks who are willing to join the meeting um or represent perspectives so that we have opportunity to invite them. I'm wondering if, you know, April eleventh or April twenty fifth might be a reasonable length of time um so that we can communicate with the community and hopefully get out a press release uh with the, the assistance of Adam Graves.
Yeah, I have a quick question related to that. Um, how actively is the pool in use right now?
We still have a swim team and then there are community organizations and I, I, that use it. And I know that we use it during our summer school that the um Park and Rec also has uh youth swim teams and and youth organizations and they're trying to add in currently trying to add in um in, increasing adult swims. But I, I still think it's an underutilized resource for this community.
Yeah, I guess that's my initial thought is, um, I, of course, think it's wonderful to be able to dedicate this kind of stuff to someone, but it almost feels like a disservice to be dedicating a space that's not well used, if that makes sense. Um, so I would just, I I don't know, I guess a consideration is wh- what, what can we do with the pool? Uh, I remember when I was in high school, the biggest thing was it wasn't up to certain competition codes. So we couldn't do like diving kind of stuff. But I'm not sure how that ends up now.
I, yeah, I think you need a particular diving uh type pool to have diving. It, I think it is much larger than most high schools have in my experience. Um, but we do have, uh, we do have swim teams competing. John?
So this is a, a pool at the high school? I, I see. Now, is it, is, is it open to the public for adult swim or, or, and who manages it? If that's the case, or?
Uh, right now, I don't believe that there, there are some times that um the pool has been made available to the general public rather than just adult time. Um, but I, I know that Park and Rec is trying to work out some adult access.
Joanne, did you have information on that?
Yeah, I was just thinking that anything, any open hours for the pool would be run through Parks and Rec.
Yeah, I think it has um in the past.
Yep.
Yep. And they have also had their own um blue fish, I believe, um, swim teams of younger children.
Right, and they still do.
They still do. I, I wondered. Yep. Okay. So what date uh sounds good? What are people thinking?
Yeah, I think Brian just said April eleventh, right?
Yeah, I think April eleventh, uh, that gives us a little more than a month.
Yeah, I would say as long as it's after our next budget vote, I think that's the next big.
Oh, yeah, I think so. Um, kind of a consensus, April eleventh to decide the pool namings. That sound good to people? Thumbs up, thumbs down, thumbs in the middle, something that I can tell. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And, and again, uh, thank Christopher and his, um I'm, I'm blanking out on what they're called.
Yeah, his school council and P T O.
Yeah, school council, P T O. I know they worked on that meeting and we appreciate that as well. And um, so the next item is, we don't have any minutes to approve at the moment. If there are agenda requests, we will be meeting tomorrow to plan the next agenda because this time we are meeting in a week from today as opposed to the usual two weeks. So we'll very quickly put together the agenda tomorrow. Um, if you have any requests, please let us know. Or for the future, our next regularly scheduled meetings are March fourteenth and March twenty eighth. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Heather, thank you.
Okay, Jennifer.
Jennifer, thank you. Any discussion of that? Okay, in that case, we'll have a roll call. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
And myself. Yes. Thank you all.
Good night.
Good night.